Welcome to the BXG Productions presents the Nexus. A podcast where pop and nerd nerd culture meets. I'm one of your hosts, the Alpha Donut Guy alongside my co-host Gregory T. Filson. The T is clearly for Tatum today. Greg, how are we doing tonight? Well, this is fine. Spring Eve.
I am, you know, I'm doing absolutely terrific. Absolutely terrific. Yeah. Just yeah, basking in Mother's Day. You know, glory. Did not get to celebrate in person with my mom, but did get to celebrate in person with Janie's mom, which is a treat. And that's about it. And then I watched Jason Tatum just shit pump the Philadelphia Sixers.
Yeah. Which his mom was proud.
His mom was definitely proud. I would also hope that if I were an NBA player and I was sitting on the bench and played zero minutes, that my mom would be proud of me there too. Also, honestly, because I still am an NBA player. Like, I do love things like that in sports where like, well, he pitched a complete game shutout. His mom's proud of him tonight. It's like, I'm pretty sure the mom of the kid that's sitting on the bench is still pretty proud that that kid made the professionals of sports where like, you know, less than 1% of people do this as a living. So.
I have, I have a question.
I hope they're still proud.
I have a question and a statement.
Go ahead.
I farted. Did it come through on the audio at all?
I didn't hear it now.
Okay, good. But I want you to know that it smells like all seven deadly sins rolled in.
Oh, no, that's terrific.
Yeah, well, stuffed peppers for dinner.
That'll do it.
Woof. You're not a stuffed pepper guy?
No, I mean, that'll do it. I love peppers. I just mean like that will.
How do you make yourself peppers? Beef or sausage?
Well, we're, we do vegetarian. So it's like rice and sorriso normally. If I'm doing them, I do it with beef. If I'm just like, if it was just for me, I would do it beef, but maybe a beef pork mix too. I tell my mom, that's how my mom would do meatballs. It was beef pork mix. It was insane. Her meatballs were like, I still like, like those are the best meatballs ever. How do you do your meatballs, Brian? Or your stuff peppers?
Uh, sausage.
Sausage.
And I just, you know, that was very kind of you to say your mothers are here on Mother's Day as we record on Mother's Day. We're a little late this week due to scheduling, basically, but we are recording on Mother's Day. Greg gives his mom a nice shout out with the meatballs. In our house, we knew when dinner was ready when the smoke detector went off. So shout out to my mom who made everything well done.
I, you know, your, your mom's best thing that she made were the bourbon balls. That was my favorite thing mom ever made. She also just fixed a nice bowl of ice cream. Because she never asked. So it was just literally like all the ice cream in a bowl. It's like, Greg, do you want ice cream? I'm like, sure. And then it's a cereal bowl of ice cream. Which is, I respect. Right. Which I respect.
You eat ice cream.
I just respect that. So.
Um, yeah, anyway, so does Mother's Day. If I could say, if I could say one nice thing about my mother, it would be that she's very honest. All the time. That's what we'll go with.
Lois doesn't hold anything back.
No, we'll go with that. She's very honest. Um, we have a move my computer here a touch because it makes it like what you were over here. It makes it look like I'm looking funny. Six pack topics. I tell you why. We've been hitting the politics lately, which is funny. Well, I also think that right now, and I mentioned it the last time we, we had this conversation was you have the politics. They are more pop culture than anything else. They are.
Yeah.
I've been really getting into Jon Stewart's new project on Apple Plus and
Okay.
It's called The Problem. And I mean, he just, he just heads right, right at the media. In fact, I will see. Uh, when we get into one of these topics, I'll actually probably quote him from from his thing. But, uh, and then some other things, some movie updates, we talk about the writer's strike here a little bit. Disney is going to fold some Hulu programming into their Disney plus subscription. And we've got a list. It's not our list. Uh, it is a list put out by Rolling Stone Magazine of the greatest ranked, the, the ranked Legend of Zelda games from uh, least, least to best because God knows I go to Rolling Stone Magazine for my authoritative information on video games as they are known.
Yeah.
To be a high quality video game publication. Uh, with that being said, I think the first thing to do here is to let everybody know all the TV shows and movies that are going to be affected by the Writers Guild of America Writer's Strike. And this is updated as of May 12th, and this comes by way of Variety. Um, the late night shows have pretty much all gone dark at this point, I believe. Correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so here's just, we'll just, I'm just going to run down through here Abbott Elementary. Um, AMC shows which include uh, Anne Rice, the, the two new Anne Rice series that we talked about a couple of weeks ago and Walking Dead spinoff shows are done, but no production has started. I suppose I should, um, Abbott Elementary. The writers room for the third season was supposed to convene on May 2nd. That room has closed. Uh, so that is on the shelf. Um, American Dad, Family Guy. Their lead writers have walked off the job. Uh, the show, the show runners for both of them have all stopped working on, on the shows. And Family Guy concluded its 21st season in early May while American Dad began its 20th season in March. So don't expect I would say a new season of either of those. Uh, this one was actually somewhat controversial and or showrunner Tony Gilroy was criticized for pursuing non-writing production work on and or after strike, the strike began. Uh, confirmed that he ceased all activities on the Disney plus show. In a statement Tuesday, he told Variety, quote, I discontinued all writing and writing related work on and or prior to midnight, May 1, after being briefed on the Saturday showrunner meeting, I informed Chris Kaiser at the WGA on Sunday morning that I would also be ceasing all non-writing production functions, end quote, and or season two has begun filming, but if there's any rewrites, et cetera, there's going to be issues there. That's a big one. Um, and he, he, Tony Gilroy took a lot of heat because his intentions weren't really clear. He was called a scab uh, by one of his colleagues, which is fun. And sometimes when it gets called a scab, it's fun. Uh, the Marvel movie Blade, which is seen, has had a pretty tortured development and has shut down pre-production. So nothing really more to talk about there. Uh, Cobra Kai closed its writers room for season six. I'm looking at anything that's House of the Dragon, all of the scripts for the second season, uh, have been turned in. And executive producer Ryan Condal remains working on the series in a non-writing capacity. Jeopardy, Myam Bialik is stepping away from her hosting duties in support of the strike due to the fact that WGA writers typically work on the Sony produced show. Production will continue into 39, season 39, however, with Ken Jelling, Ken Jennings. Billing in for her for the remainder of the season, which is fine. I like Ken Jennings better anyway. I just, it is what it is, right? Um, Drew Barrymore said that she would not host the MTV Movie Awards. Um, the red carpet event was also rolled up in the wake of the strike. Um, the Rings of Power will move forward with production on the second season, unfortunately. Uh, amid the ongoing WGA strike, but the Amazon Prime video show will not use, be using the services of executive producers JD Payne and Patrick McKay, who are supporting the guild on the strike. What could go wrong? There. What, what could go wrong on a show that is way too costly? And now their producers are just, the, the producers who are of course, the people who are supposed to keep costs down.
Right.
What could possibly go wrong on that?
What could go wrong?
Show of just master thespianism. I'll tell you what, to be honest with you, the writer's strike could be a good thing for the Rings of Power. Because those writers not great.
They need maybe a time to reflect.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's a good thing for them. Uh, Stranger Things creators, the Duffer Brothers shared a statement that production would not move forward on the Netflix series until an agreement is reached. Um.
Whoa, sorry. Ad played. I was looking up something.
It was a shit show. It sounded like.
Yeah.
Uh, co-creators of the series Yellow, have you watched Yellow Jackets? Is that a, is that a Greg show?
I don't, I, I think it's on something I actually don't subscribe to.
Showtime.
Yeah, I don't have Showtime. So I've heard really good things, but right. I haven't watched, I've heard it's great.
Co-creators of the series Yellow Jackets, Ashley Lyles tweeted that all progress on writing has halted for season three. And that is the update. Any, I mean, do we know, is there any progress being made? Are we just making bad? Um, bad picket signs.
Well, I will, yeah, you, you beat me to my punch here. It's like, so no progress has been made. They don't, I don't think progress was expected to be made until like July, when like it put, push comes to shove and like TV shows, because realistically, I mean, I understand like production, like big TV shows, like, uh, the last of all, stuff like this, like it affects it down the road. But if we're talking like the season by season, we're like, a show like Abbott Elementary is supposed to come out in September, you know, your, your network shows.
Right.
And so by July, somebody's going to have to come up with something because you need these shows to come out late September, early October. So nothing's been made. But, and I posted this the other day on my Instagram for the people that follow my Instagram is like, I start to see why these people aren't getting paid. Yeah, at GT Phil. This, I, I'm starting to see why they're not getting paid that well, because those signs suck. They're not funny. They're not clever. They are, I'm like, this is the best you can come up with. Like, you're not really showing that you deserve to have a writing credit at this point. So, um, you know, support to them doing their thing. I, you know, people need to be paid well, but also come up with better signs because those signs suck. Even people I respect, even people I like have had terrible signs. Like, the best sign you could have is to like have nothing.
Oh, I see.
Right? Yeah. Like that's, and nobody's done that. I'm like, I'm not. I was actually, I actually technically am considered a professional writer. I was paid to write for a very long time and by various sources. That's my sign is I don't, I'm not getting paid. So my sign is nothing because why would I write anything if I'm not getting paid? That's the whole point. And yet nobody's done that. And I don't get that because that's clever. It also tells the point of the whole story. So anyhow.
That, that might be a bit too highbrow.
Well, that's it. Well, everyone who knows me knows that I love that very like the high comedy, the Letterman, the Conan O'Brien. The lofty, I'm not the Jay Leno mid-America stuff. So I think we saw a lot of bad writers too. I mean, like, like, there's a lot of bad TV shows.
Yeah.
And a lot of bad movies. And so like, yeah, I think that's part of where, why these things happen is because production companies kind of use this as a way to weed out people that aren't actually good at it. And like.
By paying them poorly?
By paying them poorly. And like, if you don't really care about doing this, you'll get out of it. Like, you don't really commit to the bit and stuff like that. I think that's part of it. I really do. I mean, it sounds crazy, but I do think that's part of it.
It's, it's possible. It is possible. And, and what I would say to that is in a sense, that's how it should be. Because if, if I do a crappy job at my job, they're probably just going to let me go.
Right.
You know, and I, I, I think it's a fine line. Support versus not support. And, you know, these people have a right to make a living and a right to be paid a fair wage, but this is also a very competitive industry. And if you are a writer and I, I just think about like, um, guys that have, guys that are funny and do stand up and were writers for like SNL and like Hannibal Buress, who is one of my favorite standup comedians, was a writer on NS, SNL. And he even said like, he was like, I was, he has a bit about, um, respecting comedians. He's like, ah, you gotta respect comedians. I was Emmy nominated. Side note, I was Emmy nominated in the same way that Juwan Howard is an NBA champion. I was just in the right place at the right time with the right team. And like, he even admits, like, he's like, a lot of the stuff that I wrote just didn't land. And that's why I'm not there anymore. It's like, this is an extremely competitive industry. This isn't like, you know, I, I'll tell you who should be, uh, who should be striking for better, better labor treatment and higher wages is like the people who work in Amazon warehouses.
Sure.
Right. Those people should be, and.
They have to have a union and they'll, certain places have unions, but not all of them. And that's where that comes into play.
And that's another, you know, that's another, a whole nother ball wax. But I do think that whether or not you have, and I know a lot of these people are contract writers and that sort of thing, but like, number one, this is what you want to be. This is the path you, you've chosen. Okay.
Right.
So like, if it's all contract work, then it's all contract work and you knew what it was going in. And if you're, if I'm a contract worker on any type of contract work, whether it be a, like a construction, I'm a painter, I'm a writer, I'm a whatever, whatever other type of people who work on contracts. If my next contract depends on the quality of work that I did for this contract, you better believe I'm going to be doing the best fucking job I can do.
Well, my head.
And, and you know, i- i- if, if I'm, if I'm a studio head and I'm like, okay, well, we wrote the, you know, we, we paid you and you wrote uh, these three episodes for our 10 episode season of whatever, and those were the three worst episodes. Like, we'll pay you the money we owe you, but after that, the end, like, we're not going to bring you back if you do a bad job. And so it is kind of like, I feel like as a consumer of these things, we want the best product. And if it's like you said, one of the ways of we, weeding people out that aren't good at it is to not pay them and like, see if they can stick with it or whatever, but you know, I, I don't think that that's necessarily a bad thing as a consumer because as the Macho Man Randy Savage has said, cream will rise to the top.
Right. I mean, and a, and we, we talked about this before, where like every so often it happens, like, it's almost like on.
It's like six or seven times, I feel like it was.
Yeah. And it, it just has like a time period where it's almost like, okay, well, we've had enough of this and then we do this thing, but I mean, you could argue and you could almost argue that the longer these things go on, like, there's so much content right now. There just is. And so ultimately, like, things are worse. If you look at the whole scheme of things, like, yes, there's really, really good shows. There's succession. You know, and there's, you know, yellow, and there's really highbrow shows are very, very good, but there's also a lot of crap. And it's like, but back like when we were kids, I mean, there wasn't really honestly, like a lot of crap. And if there was crap, it lasted six episodes and they moved on, you know, and
Yeah.
Right. And so it's like, you know, I mean, we grew up with, I mean, our, like, the first show I really remember watching was like Cheers and then Seinfeld and Friends and things like that, which, I mean, whatever you think about Friends, it's still like, was very popular and people eat what, you know, and Frasier won Emmys and things like that. It's like now, there's so many things out there. So of course there's going to be really good and really bad. I feel like what's kind of hurt the industry is just too much stuff.
Yeah.
Or like, almost anyone can be a writer on these shows and that is, once, once you have too much of anything, it dilutes the product. It's just the way it is. And so like, I, like I said, I respect the idea of them striking because they want better pay. But then there's also the idea of like, some of you just aren't good.
Right.
Like, like you just aren't. And it's just, that's the thing where it just, you know, you can go on YouTube and watch a thousand different comedians. One of them's funny. Out of like, you know, so many, I don't, I like, I have a very high like regard for comedians. I don't think most people are funny. I don't think most comedians are that good at their job. And so when there's so much stuff out there, and I'm talking, I guess, like the idea of like things being funny, but just like things being serious, things just being well-written. There's not a lot of stuff out there that's actually good. There's a lot of stuff that's okay and passable, but like actually considered like this is high quality stuff and yeah, I, I think that's the biggest problem with like, this is the longer this happens, the more stuff there is out there. Of course, more people join it and it just dilutes their product. It's and really at the sports. If there were fewer NBA teams, the product would be better overall, right?
Right.
I mean, it's just right. It's just the way it is. I, I, and I think that's just the easiest way to put it is that you would have a lot of really, really good teams instead of five or six, really.
Yeah.
Yeah. Four or five, five or six really good teams. I mean, this year's kind of like way different, but and then there's just absolutely terrible teams.
Yeah.
You know, but if there were 20 teams, there wouldn't be an absolutely terrible team. There would just be a team that finishes 20th. Like, that would just be the way it is. And so that's where it is with the writers is that instead of there being, you know, 20 TV shows, there's a thousand, so there have to be people that just aren't good and necessarily aren't getting paid the way that they necessarily think. But it's also the time where you have to come back and be like, is this what I really should be doing with my life? Right?
Like, yeah. Uh, and I think I think we're, it certainly would seem as though we're coming in hot on the side of the studios. Nobody wants to see anybody lose their job. But if it comes down, but I would say too, that if it comes down to you have a job to do and the reason you're not getting paid for it is because you are not good at it, then either get better at it or find something that you're good at.
Move on. Yeah.
Like, some people are, like, look, you know what? I love basketball. I love playing basketball. But ultimately, a six foot two, heavy-legged white kid wasn't going to make it to the NBA. And I had to give up on that dream.
Yeah.
So I don't know. I, I, I don't know. It just seems like.
It's tough because the other thing in just like any kind of strike, teacher strike, any like teacher strikes are a little bit more wide open because we see everything. We can, we can actually read the contracts and everything like that and see what's actually being laid out there. But with the writer's strike, it's like, we don't really know.
Right.
Like, we actually don't know. And it's like, they're striking because yes, these like mid-tier writers essentially are just contract killers. You know, they're just here to like write for, you know, you know, here, write, write for one season and we'll see what happens. I understand that's the idea of it, but like, like you said early on, I feel like you didn't know that going on. So I will see what happens. Like I said, I, no one expects anything to happen in July anyhow, because there's nothing happening.
Right. Well, I know that certain things. Obviously I'm a Survivor guy. I like the, I like the trash reality shows. And what's funny is, is that some of those shows require writers, which is okay.
Insane.
But yeah, how real are they, right? But I know that season 45 of Survivor has already filmed. And I know that season, whatever we're on 35 or whatever of The Amazing Race is already filled. And CBS, it, it appears as though maybe has been proactive in saying, okay, well, we're going to give you 90 minutes of those shows of those edits instead of an hour. And that chews up, you know, fucking blue bloods or whatever for the week. And so I think that you'll probably see, see some of these networks try to be a little bit more proactive with, you know, what they can manage as far as filling the holes on some of these things. And it'll be interesting to see, like you said, July, July, June, somewhere in there, maybe kind of being like the cutoff point, whatever. It'll be interesting to see what happens and then how long it takes. And what gets truncated, you know, what's a, what's a 16 episode season and now it's a 12 episode season? What's a 12 episode season that's now an eight episode? You know, it'll be interesting to see the choices that get made in that regard.
And I'll just say, you know, just to maybe tie it, tie it up for me, is the last writer's strike essentially showed that we can have shorter seasons of things because things are just better that way.
Right.
Cause there were times where like sitcoms used to be like 27 episodes.
Yeah, 24. I think it was standard.
Yeah, like something like that. But it's like, there were some seasons of TV that were 27. I'm just saying it could be as high as 27.
Right.
And like SNL had like seasons of like 24, 25. And that's just not the case anymore.
Right.
Because like literally that first, that writer's strike in 2007, 2008 basis is like, well, we don't need seasons to be that long. You can actually get better content. And it's kind of diluted that it's like network TVs are 20 episodes, non-network like HBO high premium is basically 10 to 12. And that's kind of what you need.
Can you imagine? Can you imagine this day and age? CBS or ABC, who I think CBS saying, all right, we're going to be lost. And it's going to be an hour long every week and we're going to give you 24 episodes in one season.
I can't. I mean, like, yeah, that was on ABC. That, that was on ABC. And it was just like, yeah, I was on ABC. I definitely know that.
Yeah.
Um, no, that just wouldn't, it like, that wouldn't fly with people. There's just, there's too much stuff.
Yeah.
Like, yeah, you know, JD and I are watching like a couple of things. They're like, fine. Like they're fine shows. Because they're eight episodes. You know, and it's just like, if it's a 45 minute episode or whatever, like eight episodes, fine. If this was 24, I'd be like, no.
Yeah.
I'm not, I just can't. I just, there's too much other stuff I'd rather watch. And, you know, if you're a sports person or if you just like, you know, watch a movie or something like that, you still have time for 24 episodes of an hour long show.
Yeah.
As I remember too, and I guess someone who watched like NYPD Blue as a kid and ER, like those are really good shows.
Law and Order.
Law and Order, those are like, ER was awesome show. Awesome. But like, there were episodes that just did not matter.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Not matter. And it's like now basically every episode of something matters to a degree.
Right.
But with 24 episodes, you literally have like five episodes that absolutely are just, we want to focus on a character. Here's like their day to day. Here's this character eating cereal. Here's this character going to the restaurant. And it's like, it might be a fun episode. And it might placate because people like that character, but it doesn't do anything to advance the plot. And now it is what it is. So there's, you know, there is what it is with these things. I hope that people deserve to get paid more. The really, really good writers.
Get paid more.
They get it. And, and I also hope that the people that just are there and they're not really sure, like maybe they find something else that they're passionate about or they're good at because
Yeah.
It's not for everyone. It's someone who is like right now a retired writer. It's like, it's a weird business and it sucks.
Well, you just refer yourself as a retired writer.
Yeah.
I'll tell you who's not a retired writer. And doesn't have to worry about the writer's strike.
I don't get paid to write. So I'm a retired.
You're not retired. Dormant.
I could always come out from retirement. I'm like MJ. I'll make a, he's back t-shirt.
Let's say dormant. You're a dormant.
I'll let you get her retirement till you just keep coming out of retirement like George.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like that. You're too young for that.
I'd love to be retired right now. That'd be so sick.
Who wouldn't? Um, a guy who is not bound by the shackles of the writer's room is, or at least anymore is Tucker Carlson. And we talked about, uh, we talked a few.
Chuck and Roll.
Two. Yeah, um, talked about Tucker Carlson and Don Lemon, uh, leaving their respective networks, uh, two weeks ago on, on a pod. And we theorized where would Tucker Carlson pop up next? And you know, I was pretty adamant that this guy, you know, the chains are off and he's gonna, wherever he thinks that he can spout his lunacy the best uh, is where he will show up, whether that be a podcast forum, uh, YouTube, Twitch. And low and behold, he went in a direction that you want to talk about being unshackled from the reins of reality. Uh, with no accountability whatsoever.
It's the idea of like, you shoot low, I will literally shoot the lowest possible thing into the ground.
Well, yeah, I'll just shoot it straight into the ground. And so Tucker's, Tucker's gonna have a, Tucker's gonna have a video presence on the, on the, um, on the Bluebird app.
Tuta.
Yeah.
It's, it's perfect. Um, so I, and we'll touch on this with a later topic we have, but it's like, it makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, it makes all the sense in the world for him because I, I watched the video where he was like saying how he was going to have it on there. It's just batshit crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on his Twitter. It's bad. It's, it's him doing his thing, which like,
Yeah.
it's one of those funny things for me where it's like, you can tell he doesn't believe a fucking thing he's saying.
Right.
You know, he just doesn't. I, this is a person who's literally best friends with Rachel Maddow. Like they are actually like really good friends. And if you watch their shows, obviously it's the exact opposite of the spectrum. And it's like, I don't believe her and I don't believe him. Like neither one is truly spouting off what they one hundred percent believe. But when he says stuff, it's so funny. It's just so. Obviously he doesn't need writers. Like that's the key with him is like, it's just let me spout off the craziest shit. I'm excited. Like, I don't necessarily know if I'll watch it because that means like, that, that means like me giving him something. But I mean, like there are clips and stuff that will show up and like, it'll be funny because it'll be so bonkers. We're, I, we're in a, a time period now with him and then like another person with crazy hair and that nothing matters anymore.
Hmm.
And you just do whatever you want. So his show on Twitter, because it, we should say too, is that his contract says he couldn't do another network show. Like, that's why he's doing this. He can't go anywhere for a little while. I will be really interested to see what his numbers are.
Yeah, I, I'm curious to see if they'll try to say that this is a breach of cause he's, did you say he's still under, under contract? Cause he is.
He's under contract?
Yeah, they're trying, they're in the negotiation.
And his contract is you can't be on a network television. Yeah.
Right. I, I'm curious if they try to I'm curious if they try to push that.
Right.
You know, which would be funny. And then that would be just a whole nother ball of wax in terms of like the legality of it and everything, but I think that Twitter is a, so like, I use Twitter to promote our videos and podcasts. I use Twitter to engage with people who appreciate games in the same way, video games in the same way that I do. And that's about it. And the thing about Twitter is, is that it is just one giant echo chamber. And there is nothing, if you're following people, most people are going to follow people who, you and I have talked about this with social media. Have talked about like trying to follow people who have a different point of view than you. So that you can see what the point of view of the other side is. Or you can kind of educate yourself on what these other people are saying. But the majority of people are going, only going to follow people who give them confirmation bias, basically.
Right, right.
And so when you step outside, if you're not very carefully curating your list of people who you follow and people you engage with, which I'm very particular about the people that I engage with. You get into a situation where you're going to find yourself in confrontational situations. If you're interacting, you're going to find yourself in situations that you find stressful because you can't believe the stupidity of other people. And it, it does make all the sense in the world that this is where this guy would go because all of the people who can follow, all of his people that will follow him. And he can still say whatever, whatever he wants. And it's all people looking for confirmation bias in this echo chamber. And that's what they're all going to get. And no one's going to challenge that. There's not going to be anybody to say like, hey, don't say crazy shit. Because it's just going to be him on his own. And that's what I, you know, that's what I had said the, the week that we talked about this is that like in terms of viability and visibility, he's going to land on his feet somewhere. It's just a matter of, of where, and you know, he's landed on the platform of a guy who yeah, I, I used to think pretty highly of Elon Musk. Um, and I still do in some, in some regards, but just like how he's handled the whole Twitter situation is just like kind of bonkers. And I saw, we can add this to the mix, but he's stepping down as CEO and has appointed someone. Um, but I think that Tucker Carlson and Twitter is a match. It is a match made in the seventh circle of hell. Uh, but it's one that's going to be very viable for him.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I just, I, I just think like I said, I'll be interested to see what the numbers are. I mean, it can't be the same numbers as television. It just, it won't be. But it'll be interesting to see like what he does with it, how he promotes it, what that landscape will be for him and then how people who are for and against him, like respond to it.
Yeah.
Cause that's going to be the biggest thing. Like it's going to be very interactive. That's going to be the.
You would assume, yeah, yeah. I, I, Twitter's not really to this point has been really used, like there's utility on there for, there's like spaces and stuff like that where you can host these things. But I don't think that it's like, unless I'm wrong or I'm not looking in the right places, but I don't think that it's found like a general sort of this is the place to be vibe versus a versus a just YouTube Live or, or Twitch or, you know, just doing a podcast, whatever. And so to be interested to see how he's able to stretch, stretch that utility within Twitter to kind of recreate to the best of his ability, the, the audience and the voice and the influence that he had while he was at Fox, but I, this could be the downfall of Twitter. Fingers crossed.
Yeah, I mean, it could be, or it could be a whole new life for people.
Yeah.
I mean, it really could be. I mean, like I, it could be a thing where he gets, you know, two hundred thousand views. And that's obviously not TV numbers, but on Twitter.
Yeah.
That's a lot. And that's the thing where it's like, he can promote it. And then like, obviously this can be immediately viable where you stream it to this and this and this. And it's just like,
Yeah.
it's, it's highly accessible. It's very engaging with people. And also it's one of those things where it's like, yes, I would never watch him on Fox. And I'm not saying I would watch him on Twitter, but there is that idea. It's like, he says something completely crazy. Like it, Twitter just explodes either way, but it's going to be like way more, like he'll promote that stuff. That's the thing. Like that's, he'll promote, he won't care.
Yeah, it'll be interesting.
Yeah.
To see how it shakes out. Speaking of things in the news that are interesting to see how they shake out or how they shook out, um, former President Donald Trump gave a town hall. Um, what do you call it? A presentation? I mean,
Uh, something like that. Yeah.
Um, here, I don't know what, about a week ago or so on CNN.
It was Wednesday, Wednesday on CNN. So yeah. May, uh, tenth.
Okay. Yeah, that would have been uh, Wednesday, last Wednesday. And, uh, the network itself took a lot of heat for platforming, giving former President Trump a platform to speak to continue to press his fabrications about the results of the most recent election. Um, and there was a lot of press kind of in and out of this. Not any of it really good. Uh, I feel like it was I read, okay, so I read the, the transcript of what probably was about the first five to 10 minutes. And I was like, okay, this is this is stupid. This is pointless. Uh, there's nothing, there's no new information to be garnered here. He was doing a town hall to uh, undecided voters and like on the fence Republicans in New Hampshire. I would like to see, like, if you're going to do a town hall, if you're CNN and you're going to do a town hall. And this is part of, and I'm going to bring up a quote that I read from Jon Stewart, but what is to be gained by putting him on your network with a group of people who are already to some extent, maybe not so much the independents or the undecideds. But with the Republicans, these are people who make up his base to begin with. Like what, 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 what new is going to be garnered from that?
Well, nothing new is going to be garnered, but people are going to watch it. Like I was telling Janie, because we watched, I watched about five minutes. I shouldn't say we, I kind of made her watch it. If Biden was doing the exact same thing, I wouldn't have given it five minutes. You know, and I don't think anybody's going to be shocked on who like who I voted for in the election. I just, the way we talk about things in here. But there is something about him where you want to see because either way, like if you hate him or you love him, and there's no in-between. Right? There's, there's absolutely no in-between. Either you are on the side or you think he's a complete like crazy person, or you're just like, oh my God, like our once-in-future king. So
Yeah.
I watched it for about five minutes. And I, I, and I, I don't want to steal anything from anything. So I was quote like from the Tony Kornheiser show. Uh, Tony Kornheiser's son, Michael said, he was like a gargoyle. The, and I thought that was the perfect description of him. Like just the way he was kind of like lurching and, and just doing his thing where like, he's kind of like, he's always looking down on people. That's always his thing. You know, whether he's warranted that or not, even whatever you want to say, he's always like doing that thing. And so I watched it for five minutes, didn't watch commercials or anything like that. But like it's ratings and CNN's like obviously the worst network right now for these, like nobody watches it. Everyone thinks very lowly of CNN right now. Uh, on both sides, on both sides. It's just one of those things. And he's been noted as like calling them fake news, all these things. So
Right.
Essentially it was like a windfall for both. It's the idea of like CNN need a ratings, so they get him. And then he needs a platform to like really come out there.
Right.
Because Fox is trying to get their, themselves away from him. To like support DeSantis. And then obviously MSNBC is not going to have him on. It's just obviously, it's just the way their network leans. And so it's rating and then it's also this idea that maybe he says something so crazy. Now he didn't, he said, like you said, Brendan, well, what I should, he didn't say anything that was new crazy.
Okay.
Right? He didn't say anything new crazy. He said his normal stuff that like election was stolen. Obviously there's no evidence of that. Republican, people that are avid Republicans are like, yes, there's no evidence of this. This is where he needs to move on. So he just perpetuates his own arguments on there and it brings in ratings. I'm sure the ratings were like pretty high, like it's, those numbers are always weird because like everything's always compared to like the Superbowl, but I think he got a few million. And that's good for CNN because literally no one watches CNN and no one cares about CNN. Like it's just the network that like, you know, see, see later network and no one gives a shit. So it brings in views, it brings a little bit of attention to him. People talked about, like I said, Tony Kornheiser show brought it up. And like, they try to actually stay away from politics a lot. We're talking about on our podcast and we have had an uptick over the past month. Um, for various reasons, you know, you know, mostly just because of our, I would say our like Pulitzer award-winning work, but other people might say otherwise. And uh, yeah, so it, it's a very odd thing, but I also feel like it goes back to that, that Twitter thing where it's just like CNN needed this, he needed CNN. And it worked out. CNN got shit on hard.
Yeah.
Holy cow. But then his whole side of things were like best night ever.
Well, and, and that's actually a really good.
Championship.
That's a good, uh, Greg way. Um, I'm going to read you a series of tweets from Jon Stewart. Um, former host of The Daily Show. He's the man behind Apple TV plus the problem right now. Uh, he said, the problem with Trump, this is directly from him on Twitter. The problem with the Trump town hall wasn't platforming or a fragile siloed audience unable to be exposed to new, newsworthy opinions antithetical to their own. The problem was an event that was clearly negotiated to Trump's approval. An ode to access. We promise good sir, we are no longer fake news and enemy of the people. Let us prove it to you. We are fair and good and will do this however you would like. Just come back. I learned nothing from this town hall about Trump and his most ardent supporters that I haven't known since two thousand and sixteen. I learned a lot about CNN. I think that do you have something to say directly to that?
All I want to say is Jon Stewart is, is will probably run for president soon.
You think?
I, I, I truly think he will. And I think he's a good candidate for it.
I think that
he gets it. And like, he's also not a hundred years old, which would be nice.
Have you seen that? Have you seen that clip of Biden where he's like, somebody asked him questions? It's like, he's like, it's like, good for the people.
Yes.
Hurts no one.
Right.
Good for the economy.
Well, I like, I literally saw a thing, you know, like
Jesus Christ.
I saw a thing today where like people won't hire people in their seventies because they're not mentally able to handle a job. And that's like Walmart.
Yeah. Meanwhile, this guy's the leader of the free world.
Country. You know, it's like insane that this is a thing. And it's like, but that's on us. That's on us.
Yeah.
Right. It's not on them. They're just doing what they're doing.
Well, this is, this is, this is my thing is that
It's crazy.
What does it say about this country? That those were the two best guys that we could find to run for that office.
Especially since, remember Barack Obama?
Yeah.
Like, wow.
Well, and I'll tell you what, we made a we made a lot of fun of Georgia. We made a lot of fun of George W. Bush. We made a lot of fun of him.
Yeah.
Made fun of him a lot.
Yeah.
And these two jabronis make him look like this. Well, sure. But these two jabronis make him look like the second coming of FDR.
Well, and there's a whole thing. I, I remember like people were like lauding George W. and like, and then people are like, well. You know, we can't do that. Like he did a lot of bad things during his time. And yeah, he did some bad things during his time. I'm not saying that. But my God, he did not make our country look the way that it looks with Trump and with Biden. I mean, he never made us look like that. He did a lot of things. George W. did a lot of things that I will obviously not agree with. And I, I, I'm not gonna get into like that whole. But like, my God, he was just a president. He was like a good old school Republican president. Whether you're Republican or Democrat. He was just that good old fashioned Republican candidate. He just was.
We never lost face. There was not, you know, there was no losing face.
No, it was, it was not necessarily politics I agreed with, but it was politics that I understood.
Yeah.
Any other Republican in that era of things would have done the exact same thing.
Right. Yeah. I'll tell you what, this is the other thing.
Now I don't even know where it's at now. I, I didn't even tell you.
It's where. Mitt Romney and his binders full of women need to just save us. Save us from this madness.
And, and lots of things. And it's like, I know, like, I mean, we're trying not to be too political on here, but my God, where's it going?
Yeah.
Where is it going?
Ron, Ron de sanctimonious, as Trump calls him, is, he's just like Trump. He's just not as mouthy. You know what I mean?
Yeah, he's just. He's just a Florida version where it's like, I'm just kinda here.
He's more laid back. Oh, he's from the South, so he's more laid back. He's got that.
Yeah. He has none of that.
He's got that sweet tea.
Drive. Yeah.
Dripping out of his mouth.
It's just.
What are we even talking about?
Man. But no, I'm just like, we're.
On CNN.
Now. I mean, I feel like it went the right direction. It was like, this is kind of, CNN was just a showcase of where this is headed, where it's like. Get ratings, throw it on there. It's, all this is a reality show. All this is WWE like we've talked before.
Hundred percent.
None of this makes sense anymore.
No.
It.
No. This is honestly the problem that I have with all of this is that the freedom of the press is to provide. For a press that is free, fair and impartial.
Right.
And we do not have that in this country. And that is a tenet. Of a healthy democracy is that you will have a press and news media outlets. Who will be impartial. And will be. Not um. Uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Impartial and unbiased. And the problem is that that does not exist in this country. And like you said, okay, well CNN. They lean this way or MSNBC leans this way or Fox leans this way. It's like, well. Who are the people who are just gonna tell us the facts? And that's where we have lost. As a nation, we have lost our sense of delay because no one. Is willing to just discuss what the facts are.
And I'll, I'll end with this. I was a journalist for a very long period of time and I did that job very, very seriously, very seriously. Like I, it's the job I probably have taken the most seriously and, and just, I love it and I still love it. I love the idea of journalism. I did not vote in any election while I was working in journalism because the second I vote. That puts me in a way of like going in and I covered a lot of government. And yes, of course, in my mental brain, I like in my mentals, I know who I'm voting for, like who I would support, but. I could not, I could not, and I had professors and, and colleagues do the exact same thing where it's like, I couldn't justifiably vote. Because once I do that, that takes me out of the unbiased thing you're saying. And I like to think when I was writing that I wrote unbiased and I had certain things and. You know, that may, you, you would never be able to tell who I was voting for, who I supported in the way that I wrote or talked about stuff. Um, and I, and I, and like I said. I, I don't even really promote that on here on who I think or whatever. It's just, I say what I say. I don't, I've never one, I've never said anything on here that would say one thing or the other.
Well, I think definitely the things that you say, people will tell which way you lean.
I'm right, but that was saying is I, you would definitely know which way I lean for sure. But I would also, I would also say that I grew up. And you're gonna ask my mom and you could talk to, to Janie about this. I grew up one way. And I turned a different way and I, and I am still a person that is more moderate than I am one side or the other. Like on a lot of different values, there are certain things that I just think are just rights of a human being that somehow become political. But on the actual bias of these things, on, on the actual structure of what government is. I still consider myself fairly moderate. There are certain things that just aren't that. But what I, what I wouldn't just break down this as be my last point is that. You're right, Brendan. Jur- journalists have lost their way and it was all because of the almighty dollar.
Hmm.
And that's it. And like I said, you know, I watched Tucker and I watched, you know, I've watched Rachel Maddow. I haven't watched any of this stuff. I just don't care because. None of them believe one hundred percent what they're saying. And that's to me a disgrace. Let's not what this is about. It's like. To spout off, it's like, you're essentially watching first take. You know, it, that's what you're watching. You're watching first take, but with politics and. It's like, there's no way that Skip Bayless thinks that LeBron James isn't a great basketball player, but that's what he says. You know, and it, it, that's the same thing. And it's, it, it's crazy, but he says it and he'll wear his MJ shoes. And I love that Skip loves Michael Jordan, but I also understand that like LeBron is not a bad, bad. And, but that's what he says, like he will support anything. LeBron has one bad night. And this is the thing with the political stuff is. They just don't believe anything they're saying. And you can see it through their teeth. You can see it in their eyes. And that's where we've lost our way. I would love for someone to just come out there and be like, you know what? Here's the news.
Yeah.
And it's not gonna make money. I understand that, but damn it, it's gonna be the news. And if that's, if that's what we want. Somebody said this and that's what happened. You decide how you feel. That would be awesome. I would love that, but nobody will ever do that again. I guess C-span is that, C-span is that, but.
The question then, and this is a deeper philosophical thing, and you know, this probably isn't the right forum for this, but. Can a healthy democracy? Be influenced or can a healthy democracy exist with a free, unbiased and impartial press? Within a capitalistic economic situation. Cause it's all about the scoop. Who gets, I mean, we, we laugh about it every, every year. Who's got the shoot? Who's got the scoop? Is it Woj or is it Chams?
Right. Yep.
And, and, and so, and I would say honestly. Those two guys. But. Who's got the scoop? Who's got the analysis? And, and as soon as. The news became a business, twenty-four hour news cycle, somebody's always talking about something. We have to analyze, we have to have opinions, we have to have. Uh, what does this mean? How does this read into that? Well, let me tell you at five o'clock when I analyze what was said on the Senate floor. Just tell me what was said on the Senate floor.
Right.
And this was another thing that, that Jon Stewart was saying was people have been disappointed. By the briefings of the, the Trump criminal trial. Which makes sense because the media hyped it up, like it was gonna be the Superbowl. And then, and then it's just these documents that spell out what his charges are. And everybody's, oh, it's a little light, a little light there. It's like, what were you expecting? This isn't the trial.
Right.
It's just briefs.
It's the briefs.
But without all being said. Um.
Everything's going to a shit show. I mean.
It's just, you know, we're in the end of days, so hold on to your hats. Uh Hulu was purchased by Disney. In two thousand nineteen and in a cost cutting measure. Announced this past Wednesday on a. Uh, investor call CEO Bob Iger uh said that. Disney Plus and Hulu will combine by the end of two thousand twenty-three. Into a one app experience, although both will be able to be uh. Subscribe to à la carte on their own. Uh, while we will continue to offer Disney, this is quote, uh, this is a quote and it comes. By way of IGN quote, while we will continue to offer Disney Plus, Hulu and ESPN plus as standalone options. This is a logical progression for our direct to consumers offerings that will provide greater opportunities for advertisers. While giving bundle subscribers access to more robust and streamlined content. Resulting in greater audience engagement and ultimately leading to a more unified streaming, streaming experience, end quote. And this closely mirrors HBO Max. Upcoming reband as Max, which, which combine. Content from Discovery Plus and HBO Max. And Iger also mentioned that the company will hike the price of its ad free subscription plan. Which currently costs eleven dollars per month. I'm gonna be honest. This doesn't do anything for me.
Oh yeah, same.
Because I don't, there's nothing on, I, I watch Hulu for live TV. That's what our live TV. Uh, subscription is. But I don't watch any Hulu originals. And to be honest with you, I don't watch a ton of the stuff that's on Disney. I watch Star Wars stuff. I watch some Marvel stuff. The shows, I like the movies come out and I don't watch them. I've already seen them, most of them. Like I'll watch Ant-Man. Is Ant-Man on there yet?
I don't think so.
I don't know.
Quite.
Yeah, I know we're gonna do a blowout whenever um Avatar goes on there.
I, I, like, I, I'll rate with you, Brendan. Like, I don't, I watch, I watch sports on Hulu.
Yeah.
Cause so much crazy sports on there. It's kind of like if you're just need something on the background for there. We watch like maybe a show or two every once in a while on Hulu. There's always like one show that kind of stands out or whatever, but it's not. Yeah, this doesn't move the needle as much as like they want it to.
No, I think, well, and the thing that was tied to this was that they're gonna start cutting things too.
Right. Yeah.
Uh, that was also announced that there's gonna be cutting things. They didn't say anything specific. Uh, and just by the by, Ant-Man. And the lost Quantumania drops Wednesday.
Okay, very.
There you go. You can have that for your. For your Wednesday night. Streaming, um, you know, whatever.
I'd probably watch it.
I'll watch it. Maybe we can do a review on it. I don't know. We haven't done a review in a while. Why the f- not? We'll see.
Yeah.
Yeah, man. I mean, whatever. Jonathan Majors is maybe not gonna be Kang anymore because he can't stop beating people up. He looks like, I don't wanna, like, you don't wanna judge a book by its cover, but he does look like he, someone who would beat somebody up. He's just, I don't know what it is.
Can I say that the fact that it was a thing where like no one was that shocked was weird?
Well.
That was weird.
I'm sorry, he looks the part. It's not because he's black. It's because he's got broad shoulders.
He's very big.
Face.
And he's very angry looking. Yeah, he has that. He, like, you don't see him smile a lot.
No. No.
So that was weird. It's just like, that happened. And like literally ones like, no one was like, this is a surprise. Everyone's like, okay. Yeah, like huh.
Surprises didn't happen sooner.
So, yeah, that was weird. Oh yeah, I, I'm on the same thing. I'm like, I don't think it matters, honestly. It, it just lowered my price.
Well.
They won't.
Yeah, no, they'll raise it. They will raise it.
Raise it, two dollars.
Yeah. So they get you.
Still under cable. I looked at it the other day. I still am under local ca- if I got the best cable package.
Right.
Still not as much as cable, but it's close. It's almost too close considering that I have to do a bunch of clicks and buttons and stuff. Where it's like, maybe I'm gonna spend ten dollars more and I had to do a lot less. I probably wouldn't care.
You don't have a smart TV?
I'm almost. I do have a smart TV.
Oh, okay.
But I do everything through like, you know, you still have to like do, like cable is just type in your number. Your smart TV is like, you know what I mean?
This app and what if this app's passwords?
Yeah. Right.
It's the old, I have two hundred and forty-seven passwords and no one can guess them, including myself.
I, it's like today, just Hulu decided randomly because I wanted to watch like a baseball game, a college baseball game. And. That's what I do. And then it's like, oh, you haven't resigned ins in ninety days. You need to re-sign in. And well, it's like, well, I changed my password. Because I wanted to send it to someone and a family member. And so I couldn't know what I changed it to. Yeah. How dare I? Yeah. But. Yeah, we're, we're getting close to that. It'd be cool if someone could just combine all these things into one service. And I can just watch it that much easier.
Yeah, like it's called cable. We have that. Life was simple. Like there, there was a simpler times.
And well, if you could, Brendan, just very quick. If you had five things you had to combine and that's it, that's the only things you could watch, what would you pick?
HBO. HBO for sure.
Yes.
Uh, Disney. Prime. Paramount plus.
Okay.
Which is very oddly specific, but it has a challenge on it and Survivor and those.
Yeah, right.
Um. Are we saying like, am I keeping Hulu as my live TV thing or is it just?
Well, it's like YouTube TV is my, YouTube TV is my live.
Yeah, I, I then I guess Hulu for the live, which is, that's all I have right now, actually. I have, well, I have Apple, I have Apple, but when Ted Lasso is over, I will cancel Apple. So.
I think I still am getting Apple for free. I don't really know anymore.
Yeah, I got, well, we got new iPhones and I could technically be getting it for free, but I don't, I'm not that fucking motivated.
I'm not, I'm not, like, I don't need Peacock.
Something weird on Peacock that. It's like.
But you can still watch, you just watch with ads. Like.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Make something ten minutes longer by watching with ads. Like, okay, I will do that. That's okay with me. I don't.
I don't remember what it is on Peacock. They've got baseball games now. They actually had Cleveland and San Antonio at eleven o'clock in the morning today.
I, I will say, and this is just, I. Baseball is every network. It, it, you can watch a baseball game at every hour of the day if you really care, if you really care, which I do and it's fun. I, I was just watching two baseball games last three days just for background, which is great.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank God we lost the Apple TV people, cause that was awful.
Oh God, they were bad.
There's not a bad baseball broadcast now. I think all baseball broadcasts are good, if not great.
National, you mean?
National, national.
Local is, they're always homers. So it's like, you know.
Well, yeah, you can't, you can do what you do. I mean, like the Pirates broadcast is still good, like if you're a Pirates fan.
Oh boy, they've hit a rough spot.
Still in it, still in the mix, man. Man, they can't hit.
Yeah, well, you know, I, all right, let's not.
That's what I said, but now, yeah.
I'll get to uh. Too deep down that rabbit hole. Movie updates, there's four to speak of that I have and they're all somewhat fascinating. Let's start with. The Fast and the Furious Vin Diesel hints that the finale may be a trilogy.
I don't think maybe, I think it will be a trilogy.
And I don't think it'll be the finale.
Triple X.
I think that they will make these just completely in perpetuity.
Oh yeah.
Which hits, let me ask you this question, okay? Which hits twenty first? So we've got Fast ten. Coming out.
Think it's Fast twelve.
Okay, but listen, you've got Fast ten, two thousand twenty-three, okay?
Yeah.
Also in two thousand twenty-three is Final Fantasy sixteen. Now granted, games take a lot longer, especially ones that are the size of Final Fantasy. Who hits twenty first, Final Fantasy or the Fast franchise?
I'm gonna say the Fast franchise.
Yeah, I think so too, with a bullet.
Close. I think actually it's close.
I don't.
I, 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 I think we're gonna get Fast twenty, Fast double X, twenty thirty-three.
Yeah. That sounds out.
From now.
Yeah, and it takes about five years per Final Fantasy. So you're looking at another like, almost like twenty years, fifteen, twenty years.
That, well, I guess we're in twenty. I'll say, no, Fast twenty, twenty thirty. That, well, I guess we're in 20. I'll say, no, Fast 20, 2035. So I'll be 50.
Okay.
Which is stupid to think I'll be 50 years old.
Right, yeah. And also that it'll be, we'll be watching Fast and Furious movies still.
I can't wait to, I, I'm stoked about this. I don't care.
With bated breath.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, what, that's soon, isn't it? Like they were.
It's this weekend. Yeah, this weekend.
Oh man, let's see if I can carve out some time. Um, okay, so there's that. Uh, John Wick 5.
Yes.
Will depend on a trip to Japan and a bottle of whiskey.
Hell yeah.
Uh, from an interview. Via Deadline, excuse me. Excuse me. Producer, producer Basil. Wannick revealed that the duo of Keanu Reeves and director Chad Stalansky, uh, Stalas, Stal, Stahelsky, Stalovski, whatever. Uh, are heading to Japan to hammer out the finer details. Of John Wick 5 while sharing a couple bottles of whiskey. Quote, once they get through their hangovers, if Keanu and Chad have figured out something cool, if it, if they've. An organic way back in that doesn't feel like bullshit, there will be a Fast 5. Did you see, or not Fast 5, sorry, John Wick, John Wick.
I've not seen John Wick 4, uh, just because I knew it was gonna be on like TV and it's like, I just do it that way. And just, it was super, that was, it came out during March Madness. This was just bad timing.
Sure.
Uh, and by 10 March Madness, it was kinda out of the tiers. It still did okay. I still see it though. Uh. I mean, these movies are really good. I heard fat, I, geez, I heard that the fourth one was awesome. And just like, if you like the first three, you're gonna like four. So it's gonna happen. I'm not worried. It'll happen.
Yeah. Willem Dafoe is joining the cast of Beetlejuice 2 alongside. Jenna Ortega, Michael Keaton and Winona Ryder, the latter two reprising the roles from the first movie. Ortega meanwhile is reported to play Lydia Dietz, the daughter of Ryder's character.
Yes.
Catherine O'Hara is also returning from the original cast. Justin Theroux and Monica Bellucci will reportedly have been cast as well. Tim Burton set to return. Uh, rumors of Beetlejuice sequel date back over a decade with Keaton and Ryder admitting it was in the works. Burton noting that it was close, closer than ever in 2017. The long awaited sequel was officially confirmed. And it is set to release September 6, 2024, the same day that Marvel is expected to release Blade, the Blade reboot. There is however, no chance in hell that Blade makes that date.
No.
Just letting everybody know right now, not happening. So.
I'm here for Beetlejuice.
Yeah, you're welcome with a professional here.
It's a great, it, it's a great movie and like you're bringing back part of the cash. You're bringing back Jenna Ortega. It just seems fitting. I know people, some people were upset. She's like, oh, she's just being like typecast, but like she fits this perfectly. Like, she's awesome as Wednesday. Like, there's a certain thing. She has that vibe about her and also like. She's also 20 or something like.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So it's like, she has a lot of time to not be typecast. Also going down her, it's like, take these opportunities while you have them because it's cool to do that. And. So yeah, that's where I'm at. It'll be a fun movie. It will be a fun movie.
I don't see how they, I don't see they, how they top the, uh, the dinner scene. I just.
Well, no, you're not gonna make a better movie. You're not gonna make a better movie, but.
Yeah, we'll see. Um, finally, and this probably shouldn't come as any kind of surprise. But the creator of the Legend of Zelda are interested in a movie after. Mario's success. Could a movie, could a Zelda movie also cross a billion dollars at the box office like Mario did? Um. Some of the folks not named Miyamoto. Were asked by Polygon, um. While they confirmed that it is definitely of interest, it's ultimately not up to them. I have to say, quote, I have to say, I'm interested for sure, but it's just not. Me being interested in something that makes things happen. Uh, maybe the voice of the fans was important, blah, 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 blah. I do not think that. I don't think that a, a Legend of Zelda movie would do nearly as well as Mario. Let me tell you why. Half the people out there think that Link is Zelda.
Right.
And that's a problem.
Yep.
I think that, uh, do I think a Legend of Zelda movie would be, would do well? It depends on how it's done.
Sure, yeah.
Because you're dealing with something that is. While still very cartoony in the presentation within Nintendo, also lends itself really well to live action. Type performances. And I think that a live action Zelda would be an unmitigated disaster. I think that. Yeah, you have to go in the same. You have to go in the same CG, like this sort of like CG, uh, animated, computer animated Pixar. Situation like Mario did. And I just don't think like, listen. We're gonna talk about Zelda here shortly. Tears of the Kingdom just dropped two days ago. I'm sure it's gonna sell. Just hand over fist, like a, just a ass whopping amount of copies.
Yeah.
But I don't think it translates as well because it's not necessarily made for children and Mario is, and Mario.
That was gonna be my point, yeah.
Very recognizable. Mario is extremely recognizable. Mario might be one of the most recognizable faces in the world, honestly.
Right, oh yeah.
And everybody knows the first 10 notes to the Mario song. You know what I mean? Or however many. And a lot of people know that for. Specific Zelda games, but I don't think that it would do as well. And I think that. They are angling towards this sort of Nintendo cinematic universe. And I swear to you. If it all ends up in a Super Smash Brothers game. I'm gonna just, I'll eat, I will eat a shoe. I'll eat a shoe on air, on video. I'll just, you know, fork. How do you cook a shoe? I don't know. We'll get there though.
Yeah, I think you low and slow.
Sure, low and slow, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, really wanna like brisket it.
Yeah, bring out the juices.
Oh God, could you imagine the juices with my sweaty ass feet?
I don't care.
It would just be green, straight green. So we're gonna end here with, um.
Oh no.
The, do you have this up?
Uh, I don't have it up right now. I can bring it up very quickly though. Hope my computer died, so I don't have it.
Okay, so now you can't, you can't bring it up. Again, as I said at the top, I know when I'm looking for the really hard boiled, well thought out. Well reported on, very respected gaming. Uh, news and think pieces. The first publication that I consider is obviously Rolling Stone.
Right.
Known for its music reviews and, um, shitty political takes these days. Release a list of the best. Uh, from 17 to one Legend of Zelda games. So I'm gonna go through their list super fast. Okay? Uh, number 17 for the 3DS, 2015's Triforce Heroes. Number 16, I gotta get this ad out of my way. Number 16 for the Game Boy Advance, 2002, Four Swords, Four Swords Adventures. Number 15, uh, 2009 Nintendo DS Spirit Tracks. Number 14 for the Nintendo DS in 2007 was the Phantom Hourglass. Number 13 for the Wii in 2011 was Skyward Sword. Number 12 for the Game Boy Advance in 2004, the Minish Cap. Number 11, 1987's NES, uh, Zelda 2, The Adventure of Link. Uh, number 10, 2013, uh, 3DS, the sequel to the Super Nintendo's A Link to the Past, A Link Between Worlds. Number nine, Game Boy Color 2001, Oracle of the Ages, Oracle of the Seasons. Number eight, GameCube and Wii 2006, Twilight Princess. Uh, number seven, the original, the OG, 1986's regular Nintendo, The Legend of Zelda. Number six. Uh, 2000, for the Nintendo 64 Majora's Mask. Number five, the Game Boy version, Link's Awakening from 1993. Um. Number four, 1998 on the Nintendo 64, Ocarina of Time. Number three, the Super Nintendo's 1991, A Link to the Past. And number two. Number two is from 2003, uh, The Wind Waker on the GameCube. And number one is on the, uh, the Wii U and the Switch from 2017, Breath of the Wild. Um. It's just. My opinion.
True.
This list is poor. And I don't think that you can have a game. That is. Divisive in the way that it is, is Breath of the Wild be number one. Because. Most people revere Breath of the Wild.
Yeah.
But there's also a very large percentage of people who don't. And I am one of those people. And it is because of the structure of the game. It's very ambitious. And I think that. The secret sauce of The Legend of Zelda got left out. Of Breath of the Wild. And that is dungeons and having a cool sword that doesn't break every 10 times you swing it. And so for me, this list gets discredited immediately by not having in the top two, Ocarina of Time and Link to the Past in some order. And those were three and four.
Link of the Past is amazing.
Yeah, uh, Link to the Past to me is one of the three best games ever made. And. The other thing that I find hysterical is just the revisionist history that The Wind Waker has gotten because everyone fucking hated that game when it came out. It was weird. It was cel shaded. Link looked like a little kid. Nobody liked that. And now everybody likes it. It's kinda like The Phantom Menace. Everybody liked The Phantom Menace when it came out.
Right.
I was there. I was in the theaters. I saw that movie in the theaters. I was there. Everybody liked The Phantom Menace. I don't know about that George R. Guy, but the rest of this was pretty damn cool. People did not like Wind Waker. And now it's somehow the second best Zelda game ever made. Erroneous on both counts. Number one is A Link to the Past. Number two is Ocarina of Time. Those two, you can flip them around. If you're a 3D guy, if you're a top down guy or gal. Or whatever. It can be, those are your two options. Those are your two options. When you're selecting the best Zelda game ever, it's either the link, A Link to the Past or Ocarina of Time. Though that's it. And then everything else after that is, you know, names out of a hat for all I care. Like these DS games, like looking at the pictures, I didn't. Like the DS games or like the Game Boy Color games, stuff like that, like the, the Spirit Tracks or whatever. They look like bad episodes of Gummy Bears.
They look really bad. That was the thing, yeah.
It was, there's been here, this is what I would say, right? And this kinda goes back to why, why does Mario work in movie and why does Link maybe not? Or, you know, The Legend of Zelda. There has never been a miss. With Mario.
Right.
Every Mario mainline Mario game from Super Mario Brothers on the Nintendo Entertainment System. In 1985 to Mario.
Even Donkey Kong.
That's not a Mario game. It is, but it isn't.
You're right. But I'm saying like even Donkey Kong is like a game that people know and like.
Mario Brothers, okay. Let me redact that. Mario 2 is weird, but it's also not Mario 2. It's Doki Doki Panic. And they just reskinned it because they didn't think that we were good enough to play Mario 2 over here in the West. And guess what?
They're right.
They were right. We got lost. That's what we got is the lost levels and those levels are hard as fuck. Anyway, how hard is fuck? Um. Who's doing the fucking, I suppose? Mario, Mario 2, Mario 3, Mario 3, absolute banger. One of the best games ever.
Yes.
And then Super Mario World is just iterated on that to make it even better and is, in fact. As far as I'm concerned, not up for debate. The greatest game ever made is Super Mario.
Makes me feel good that like a game I played is that.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's, it's a whole different conversation. Um, Mario 2, Yoshi's Island on Super Nintendo, very good. Mario 64, banger. People didn't like Mario Sunshine. It was a mixed bag. I didn't have a problem for it on a GameCube. Super Mario Galaxy on the Wii, Super Mario Galaxy on 2 on the Wii. Certified hits, Mario Odyssey, awesome. There's some in there with Zelda that weren't so great. And like, a lot of people didn't really like Skyward Sword. Some people didn't like Twilight Princess. I thought Twilight Princess was fine. Um, like I said, the revisionist history on Wind Waker is hysterical to me because. Alexa, shut up. She's like a dog when she starts humping your leg. You just gotta let her finish. So that's where we're at with all that. Um, stay in your lane, Rolling Stone, or hire me.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, you know, who's this clown? Ah, close the window. Who is this clown? The worst of the insults because not only are you a clown, but you're not even a well-known clown.
I love it.
Media recommendations.
Love it. Uh, so I will say I post a lot of pizza reviews.
You sure did.
Recently, and so a lot actually, uh, and I still have a couple more I wanna release. I didn't wanna like put all up there. So my pizza reviews, getting a lot of reviews, check those out. Uh, ask to follow me because I keep, I change my account to private to public.
Yeah, I saw that.
Based on reviews, just because of things, um. That maybe I can talk about later. Uh, yeah, that's basically it. Uh, I, I'm still reading like a gigantic book, so I can't really recommend that right now until I finish it. And I've just been listening to a lot of Grateful Dead. So that's not like media recommendations. So they've been around for 50 years. So yeah, that's kinda where I'm at. What about you, Brent?
Well, I picked up this new book, um, called The, uh, The Odyssey. No.
Oh, hell yeah.
No, no, I'm kidding.
Banger.
Yeah. Um. Uh, mostly I've just been playing Jedi Survivor. Uh, on the, um, PS5, so.
And you haven't, just clarification, you haven't played the Legend of Zelda Tears for Fears game, as I keep calling it.
I haven't done it yet. I may do it. If this doesn't work out, probably I will do it.
No, I don't think, so it's a direct sequel.
It looks cool, but I don't also know, yeah.
It's a direct sequel to Breath of the Wild. I'm waiting for Charles, who is our games, you know, Vertical Slice co-host. To basically tell, he knows my taste. We've played games together for the last two decades. He knows my taste. And so he's gonna let me know if I would like it. I don't think that I will. Because it's just a lot of the stuff that I, that I did not like about Breath of the Wild. Seems to not only be back, but it also seems to be expanded upon. Like you can, you can make like a Zelda mech. Like I don't need to make a Zelda mech. Give me a dungeon with puzzles and a big boss to fight. Like that's what I want out of a Zelda game. And maybe that's just like me saying, stay in your lane Zelda. But also, when you have a formula. That is, you know.
Trying true.
H2O is water every single time and it's something that you fucking need. Maybe don't add, I don't know, mercury to it.
Right.
I don't even know if that's possible, but.
You could add mercury to water. It'd be bad.
Right, for the fish.
And us, but they are mercury.
Yeah. I, well, oh, yeah. All right, let's go. It's time, it's time to, it's time to shut this down. We've talked, you know, we did, we talked too much about politics. I don't like that. It's not who we are. Glad I worked Donald in there though, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you gotta do.
Yeah. You know where they can't play Tears of the Kingdom at?
Dana.
Let's say China. China, 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 China. Actually, I don't know if that's true or not. I don't think, there's, there's like really, there's some really weird. They've got like really weird and oppressive laws against their like video games over there in China. Um, yeah, well, yeah, against everything, like. Everything, you know?
Like living is hard.
Right. Yeah, well, sure. Yeah, I'm pretty sure, well, never mind. That's a topic for another day. Um, BXG Podcast publishes on, uh, nine, nine AM. On most Fridays, uh, the Nexus, uh, oh, we should probably talk about the new thing. The Annals of Our Lore. Right? The Annals of Our Lore. Is a new show from BXG Productions that will be hosted by Greg.
That's right.
I'm not sure if he knows this yet, but it is. Um, well, I guess we did talk about that at one point.
Really, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, uh, where we, we, we will be hosting each week, a guest. It is a strictly conversational podcast. Each person will bring one random topic to the table. We'll talk about that topic for as long as that topic needs to be talked about. And then we'll move on to the next one. And, uh, the first of those, the first of the Annals of Our Lore, uh, will be. Releasing on Wednesday, this Wednesday, so two days after this podcast, uh, with our first guest, we'll keep that a secret. Keep it a big secret. Cause it is a big secret.
Big secret.
Uh, but we'll be talking about some fun topics. I don't know if they're fun.
They're topics.
They are topics. I'm trying to make all the topics that I pick not that fun. I want to have serious.
I mean, I like mine's fun. Mine is just a thing I thought about a couple of weeks ago.
Gotcha. Um, but yeah, that's coming, but typically the nexus, like we said, scheduling issues, so this is out on. Um, the fifteenth, which is a Monday, but typically we were on Fridays. The Ides of May, indeed. Uh, you don't have to beware of them, but.
You should.
Well, yeah.
Be wary.
You never know. Um, and, uh, social media is at BXG Productions across the board, at GT Phil, that Alpha Donut Guy. And, um. Enjoy your. Day after Mother's Day, listening.
Enjoy your week at work.
Or don't.
Yeah, or just be a normal person, hate your week at work.
I'm actually gonna work a full week this week. I'm really looking forward to it.
Kind of sorry to hear that.
Hey, um, everybody's got their struggles. Enjoy, take care. Thanks for listening.
Bye-bye.